It's six o'clock on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Cleveland County Commissioners. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum tonight?
Yes, we have a quorum.
Thank you. As, as you know, we've been asking for volunteers to do the pledge and the invocation, and tonight, Air Force veteran and Director of the La Grin Center, Jason Falls, has agreed to provide that for us. So if you'd all please stand.
Do you want me to pledge?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want me to purp? Dear my Father, we thank you for the opportunity for us to gather here tonight. God, we just ask for you to guide the discussions that are made, the decisions that are made here tonight. We ask for your hand of protection over those people that, on a daily basis, protect and serve the residents and citizens of Cleveland County. Thank you for all that you've given us and for being so gracious to us. We ask you thanks in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I'd like to thank you all for being here tonight, and it's nice to be in a little bit better venue and sitting a little closer together. I hope things are getting better for us. This time, I'd like to recognize any elected officials that are with us tonight.
Danny Blaine, Lakeview Boulevard.
Thank you, Danny.
Betsy Martin, Stewart Deeds.
Thank you, Betsy. Thanks for being here. I'd like to recognize any veterans we have here tonight. State your name and your branch of service, please.
Jason Falls, United States Air Force.
Tony Edgerton, National Services.
Steve Aggett, U.S. Army.
Johnny Hudson, U.S. Army. All of y'all have one of our county pins?
Yes.
Appreciate your service.
Yeah, thank you for your service. And law enforcement that might be here tonight.
Danny Howell, Brooklyn County, Fairmont.
Thank you. Thank you, Danny. And the county department heads, if you would stand and give us your department, please.
Carrie Mountain, Assistant County Manager.
Katie Swanson, ZO Service Services.
Jason Falls, Business Development Director.
Allison Moon, Human Resources.
Terry Davis, Emergency Management Department.
Story Guy, Fire Communications.
Hope Barrington Building Inspector.
Tony Edgerton, Animal Services.
Lucas Jackson, Finance.
Sherri Laver, Tax.
Scott Omerman, Daryl Sand, Electronic.
Artic, IT.
Thank you all for being here tonight. We, we appreciate your service to the county. Commissioners, you have a proposed agenda in front of you. Are there any items that need to be added to the agenda?
You can now make a motion. You accept the agenda presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Everybody in favor? Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to have citizen recognition. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up?
No, sir. Nobody signed up.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move right on to the consent agenda. And for that, I'm going to call on Brian Epley, the county manager.
Thank you, Commissioner Bridges. Fairly short, concise consent agenda for consideration this evening. Item A from Tax Administration, your monthly collection report for April twenty twenty-one. Happy to report collections through the month of April, ninety-eight-point-one-zero percent. That's exactly one percent higher than this time last year, and that department just continues to really excel and do a really good job for our organization. Item B, also from Tax Administration, is your monthly abatement and supplement report for the month of April. Also, abatements total three thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. Supplements total one hundred sixteen thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars and forty cents. Item C is from our Sheriff's Office, budget amendment number sixty on the year, request to budget state dollars in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred sixty-seven dollars. And this is from the Bulletproof Best Partnership Fund, again from the state. And finally, for consideration is item D, which is your JCPC, annual funding allocation. Included in your packet is that recommended allocation funding. This is an annual process that the Board of Commissioners are required to review and approve. I would remind you, these are flow-through dollars, no, no local monies. And a brief description of each of the cost centers are included in your packet as well. And Mr. Chair, that concludes your consent. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have any questions, comments?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, that gets us to the regular agenda. And again, I'm going to recognize Brian Epley, the county manager, to present the recommended budget.
So I appreciate the opportunity to, to share the proposed budget for FY twenty-two with the board this evening. Really, the last twelve months have, have required this organization to operate in an unprecedented time, say the least. And there's been a demand for innovative, critical thinking, and really an adaptability that we've put a lot of pressure on the organization and really taught us a lot. And so, the theme for the FY twenty-two budget is rethinking high performance, trying to advance the Board of Commissioners' vision of promoting high performance and, and taking hard-earned lessons over the last twelve months and applying them to a momentum that was established pre-COVID, so that we can be a better county government and support our community better as we move forward. The theme behind the budget, rethinking high performance, is centrally focused on doing more with less. Our leadership team, many of which are here with us tonight, and I'm thankful and grateful for that, have bought into a unified vision of focusing on performance and focusing on achieving the Board of Commissioners' strategic goals. And so, you'll see that as a theme as we work through it. And I, again, want to, want to pass so much of my gratitude to members of the team that really made a, a very challenging previous twelve months, I think ultimately produced a product that gave us an opportunity to exercise and, again, learn from things that we've cultivated and, and be something that we can all be proud of as we move forward. So as I jump in, I always think it's important to remind the board that your strategic plan, which you work on regularly, most recently updated at your work session back in, in February, is the guiding compass that helps draft our budget. The principles, the goals, the measurements areas that you outline, and your strategic plan ultimately are what guide staff for allocated resources. Our budget is priority-based, and these drive our priorities. I also think it's important to start with remembering where we've been. When I talk about an unprecedented previous twelve months, we have had a navigation tool through this crisis management plan that we consistently refer back to as react, rebuild, rethink, that, that has been a, you know, a, a guide, a way to communicate to our employees, communicate to our community on, on a systematic way of phased approach to managing through COVID. As we continue to operate in this rethink phase, it's sustaining momentum that, that we had built and really the most robust operational capital plan in the history of our organization. And then also moving forward with challenging our team to, to, again, exercise due care and doing more with, with taxpayer dollars and accomplishing things that impact our community and ultimately accomplish our purpose. And, and we think that we've been able to do that. I want to start by talking a little bit about how we develop the budget process. Again, I mentioned that it's priority-based, and, and those priorities are tied to the Board of Commissioners' strategic plan. And, and we really focus on trying to narrow in and filter through a, a, a large gamut of competing priorities. When you look at all the things the Cleveland County Government is involved in, whether it's handling solid waste or providing medical services or, or whatever the, the goal may be, we, there's a variety of things that we could focus and prioritize. And so, working through this, this allocation process really helps us get to an, an output measurable that we can keep our eye on, keep a pulse on, and report back and try to, again, put resources in areas that create the most output for our community. I think one of the things that I mentioned earlier that, that we're most proud of with this budget is, again, it's focused on high, high performance, serving our community, serving our purpose. But we've really learned this through, through this rethink phase of our plan about linking strategy, scientific technical strategy, with the values that we identify with and we want our corporate umbrella to be, to be identified with. And when I talk about picking up on momentum pre-COVID and then bolting on the things that we've learned, that's really the underlying tone, is linking the values that we identify with, with the strategy to execute those. And we believe that's the, the way that we can be most effective. Our budget was developed really over a pretty fluid period. It's become a very sophisticated process and, and complex process that takes most of the year. We began back in December with a department head kickoff, followed by January and February being financial updates to the board, measurement periods of how we are doing, how we are performing. I mentioned your work session back in February, and since that point, from February until May, we had to develop departmental budgets. We had to meet with community partners, prioritize legislative, legislative goals, evaluate the economy, tie the strategic plan to our revenue communication. And then ultimately, that leads to tonight, in which we present the budget. Following adoption, as you can imagine, between July and December, there's another measurement period. And it's really, as we continue to refine this process, become a fluid process that we, that's almost year-round. So, as we, again, begin to develop the policy, the procedure side, one of the biggest indicators of how our budget's going to look is, is tied directly to how the economy's performing. So we, we have many, many key data indicators that give us really an outlook, a forecast of how the economy's performing at a, at a macro level, because we, we understand that's going to filter down and impact many of our revenue sources that ultimately is going to drive the resources that we have to allocate in the budget. So I won't go through all of them. I just wanted to touch briefly on the top four that I think are directly applicable to the development of the Cleveland County budget for FY twenty-two. I'll touch momentarily on automobile sales. The tie there and the reason that that's material to our budget, we have, moving into next year, about a ten-point-three-billion-dollar tax base. About eight-hundred-million of that roughly is from automobile sales. And we recognize that automobiles depreciate quickly, typically on a five-year life. And without new automobile selling at that inflated cost to replace the depreciable cost, we have the ability to have an erosion of tax base that could cost us revenue. New home sales and retail sales both are good indicators of economic vibrancy, again, tied to multiple revenue sources that impact our budget. And then the last indicator there, manufacturing, that's really just us keeping a pulse on a variety of indicators that, that are tied to a, a large portion of our labor market. In Cleveland County, we have about fifty thousand total jobs in our labor market. An overwhelming percentage of those are moving towards this industrial advanced manufacturing, which is great, because they are high-paying jobs with career paths. But, but we also want to make sure that they're protected and they're still growing, as well as our tax base. When you look at our top ten taxpayers, again, there's a, there's a little bit of a concentration there in that manufacturing circle. So how that market goes in some regards is how our budget and revenue resources go. So we want to keep a pulse on that and measure it. Here's just a quick optic from automobile sales. And this is going all the way back as, as far as nineteen seventy-five. So this is total units sold adjusted for value. And you can see, this time last year, nationally, automobile manufacturers had shut down. They were transitioning their conversion lines and assembly lines to things like breathing apparatus and, and other treatment devices to, to help battle the pandemic. And we were significantly concerned about the potential erosion of a tax base. Again, it's about eight-hundred-million dollars. As I look at the chart now, there's, you know, and this time a year ago, we were trying to predict what the economic recovery curve would look like, what the steepness would be. And I'm pleased to report that as we stand here, we've, in March of twenty-one, when this data was pulled, just about recovered to pre-pandemic, all the way back to two thousand sixteen-seventeen, when our economy was really performing at an unprecedented level. And this should give us, as we're trying to get a feel for either, you know, an optimistic outlook or a pessimistic, pessimistic outlook for these revenues that are generated from economic vibrancy, a pretty solid outlook. New, new family homes, same, same story. When you look at March of twenty, very low. And there's been this pretty vertical ascension back up to what is more normal. And I think we all know that there is a, you know, a high demand and a supply-demand shortage almost in the housing industry right now, and the market's turning things around quickly. But when you look back, again, historically looking, and this red line is where we are now, it's, you have to go all the way back to this two thousand seven-eight timeframe to get to where the housing market is right now, which is good, another indicator for an optimistic outlook as we're evaluating the economy. Retail sales, I've communicated with the board many times over the last six months, that sales tax, which is one reference from retail sales, continues to perform unlike it ever has in Cleveland County. We've recorded record month after record month, system-wide, in sales tax collections and revenues. And again, same story. You see this dip and then this very quick recovery, really to, to a level that's higher than we've ever seen here in Cleveland County. The last key economic indicator that I would point out comes to is, you know, an industry-adopted metric from the Institute of Supply Chain Management, specifically the Procurement Management Index. And this is just a pulse, an indicator, if you will, of the contraction or expansion of the manufacturing economy. And as I mentioned earlier, this is so important because of the jobs in our labor market that are tied to it, as well as the tax base. Generally speaking, anytime this index is above fifty, we are experiencing an expansion in, in the manufacturing economy, meaning that the ability to acquire raw materials and convert that into a finished good is a fluid process with no hiccups. And anytime it's below fifty, typically that's a contraction. And so, you know, this time last year, you can see, we were down in the thirty-nine-to-forty-one range, which was causing some concern. We're all familiar with two thousand eighteen Schleter was, was a, a corporation that impacted the county's tax base significantly. That was about two-hundred-thousand dollars in revenue that we lost pretty immediately. During twenty-twenty, Balldor, former Balldor, ABB, same, same experience. And so, trying to absorb and be aware of the concentration risk there and keeping an, you know, an outlook on this, this type of measurement tool is critical. And you can see where we are and as of the end of March here, it's sixty-four-point-seven percent. Again, all of those indicators put together, I think should just foundationally begin to give us some security and some, and an optimistic outlook with our, from a macroeconomic perspective as we begin to develop the budget. So as I dive into the FY twenty-two budget, sometimes I find that it's most effective to start with where we're going. So instead of jumping straight into the details, let me tell you on slide fifteen, what's going to be demonstrated throughout the rest of the budget. So the highlights for next year's budget, the general fund is balanced at a below-revenue-neutral tax rate of fifty-four-point-seven-five cents. That's a two-point-two-five-cent tax rate deduction. Cleveland County Schools is balanced at a fourteen-cent tax rate. So collectively, that's a three-point-two-five-cent tax rate reduction. The FY twenty-two budget that's being proposed does not include any funding from the American Rescue Plan. We are still awaiting guidance and compliance allowable spending guidance from the Treasury. And our strategy is going to be to evaluate that one-time money for one-time uses as it comes in. I want the board to know that our budget is developed principally and foundationally from a zero-based perspective, meaning it's not incremental. We didn't start with last year's numbers, roll them over and add new cost. We start every line item at zero and we build that up, so that we have integrity in, in our budgeted numbers. There's also a one-point-seven-five-million-dollar allocation, allocation for future debt service that will be tied to the board's capital improvement plan for future public safety capital. We did anticipate recapturing the majority of our prior year revenue loss. So, for example, sales tax is performing higher than it did pre-COVID. So we've recaptured the majority of that revenue. Occupancy tax, some of those other things that, as we begin to release the, the regulatory requirements and the shutdowns and the restrictions that are, that are there. Other revenues that, that haven't seen that level of rebound aren't fully recaptured, but they will be over a multi-year period. We also did not include, include any funding from the Catawba Resort Development down in Kings Mountain. We included an allowance for a mid-year CPI adjustment that would be obviously for our employees. And we included two additional FTEs, one in the Register of Deeds office and one in code enforcement. So that's the, that's the fifty-thousand-foot view highlight, and now I'll work through some of the details. The fifty-four-point-seven-five-cent tax rate requires a multi-year outlook, and we have some knowns and some unknowns. So you can see here at the top, we've taken the tax base of ten-point-three-billion and grown that incrementally at an adjusted rate of two to three percent based on historic norms. And we can reasonably project what our tax revenue's going to be off of that. So if I focus on twenty-two, I can see we've got about two-point-five-million-dollar of tax revenue growth. We were experiencing Phase Two savings from early retirement, our early retirement incentive program. I would remind the board that we've experienced about one-point-two-million-dollar in savings already. FY twenty-two would experience another four-hundred-thousand. Our Health and Human Services budget, which would be Public Health and Social Services, a reduction in the local cost of about six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. And I'd point out, and we'll look at it more when we get there, all of that being done with no quality interruption, no service reduction. It's just been a, a, a cultural buy-in, it's doing more with less, and really self-sacrificed at the individual employee level for the team benefit. So proud of that team. Economic recovery savings, those are that sales tax dollars coming back. And then you can see down at the bottom of the, of the funding side of the budget, about three-hundred-thousand dollars in other operational efficiency gains. And that's primarily in energy consumption reduction. So we went, gone from about a one-point-eight-million-dollar energy budget to about one-point-five, from just working smarter. Intelligent commissioning, programming, digital controls, LED lighting, those type of things. Things that are on the bottom side of the budget, we got, I mentioned the one-point-seven-five-million for future debt service. We implemented the full market study. The first-year annual cost of that's two-point-one-million. The local, the local government retirement fund, our treasurer's rate increase is about four-hundred-thousand dollars. I mentioned the new personnel. I'll touch on our wellness fund later, but we've got a five-percent or two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar allocation there. About a four-hundred-thousand-dollar increase, both in operational and capital funding to our community colleges, they continue to be our premier workforce development partner. We experienced about a six-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar, which is about point-six-two-five-cents of increase in just general cost of doing businesses, doing business throughout our departments, contracts and material costs and so forth. And then we're beginning year one of a three-year payback for fund balance that was required to be strategically used in the FY twenty-one budget to balance as we experienced revenue loss because of COVID. So I'll touch briefly on the revenue portfolio. As I mentioned earlier, we've got about a hundred-and-twenty-point-five-million-dollar general fund budget for consideration. Our three largest revenue sources continue to be ad valorem tax at fifty-nine percent, restricted intergovernmental, which is primarily federal and state grants and Health and Human Services, as well as sales tax there at about thirteen percent. Those would be a very common top three for any county government in North Carolina. Here's just a more detailed optic of how those break down. And the seventy-one million there is, includes both general fund and school, and so does the sales tax. One of the big items impacting our budget is fifty-nine percent of our total revenue, but it's also, as you all are well aware, the twenty-twenty-one revaluation process was a big part of our budget. And as you can see, with a, a proposed rate of fifty-four-point-seven-five cents, that is the continuation of a, of a culture and, and an intentionality on decreasing the tax burden and being efficient and, and doing more with less that Cleveland County has had for some time. When you look all the way back to nineteen ninety-seven, you can see each time the tax rate changed, it's come down. If you look over to the right-hand side of the slide, you can see how the proposed allocation would work, with about eleven-point-six-five cents of that fifty-four-seven-five going to the schools, another two-point-seven-six going to the community college. The rest are internally allocated, with the major portion going to our payroll. I mentioned that we've got about a ten-point-three-billion-dollar base. That's about an eight-hundred-and-forty-million-dollar increase. The proposed tax rate, fifty-four-point-seven-five cents. And, and at that value, the value of opinion is roughly one-million dollars moving into FY twenty-two. I wanted to give the board some comparisons for some regional peers, and I wanted to compare their tax rate to their tax base. And, and I think it's, it's, it's pretty logical that those are the two variables that compute to most organizations' primary revenue source, which is their ad valorem tax. And, and it's important to keep in mind that both the rate and the value are critical. At the bottom, you can see currently our countywide tax rate is seventy-two cents, which is fifty-seven cents from our general fund and fifteen cents from the school fund. And our peer average is about sixty-seven-point-three. If you move to the, to the second column there, you can see with an adjusted rate of fifty-four-seven-five and fourteen cents with the school, we're at sixty-eight-point-seven-five cents, which is only about two-point-one-percent higher than our regional peer group. But when you look at the average tax base, we're moving to a ten-point-three-billion-dollar tax base. Our peers have about a fourteen-point-one, so they're at about three-point-nine-percent higher tax base, but we only have a two-point-one-percent higher recommended rate. So the point there is, there's still more evidence that county government is doing more with less and having efficient uses of public resources. I wanted to include the LGC, which is the Local Government Commission, the Physical Control Act-determined revenue-neutral rate. I would point out that that includes an escalation factor of four-point-three percent, which is part of the formula. It captures the previous five years' average percent increase as far as property tax base, and that's programmed in. And for the FY twenty-one revaluation, the revenue-neutral rate for Cleveland County would be fifty-five cents. Again, the proposed rate is a quarter cent less than that at fifty-four-point-seven-five cents. And lastly, what I would say about revow is it's, it's important for our, our citizens and our, our taxpayers to recognize that, again, it is a formula-driven process to get to their tax liability. Just because the value may go up or down, that is also dependent upon the rate before one can arrive at the product. And, and so, as, as we see values increase, which is, you know, truly driven by market, and once you do, you do revows statutorily based on department revenue sales ratio or, or based on timing, as prescribed by the North Carolina Department of Revenue, the Board of Commissioners has the authority to effectively set that rate to, to ultimately calculate what that liability's going to be, up or down. And you can see that when applied to an average property, a property owner, the far-left column, I've taken a, a little bit higher than average property value in Cleveland County of a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. I've applied the county tax rate and the school tax rate as they are today. And in that case, that citizen would be, would be paying roughly a thousand and eighty dollars a year in property tax. Same thing with the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar property owner, a little bit more expensive property there. That person will be paying about eighteen-hundred bucks. If I move post-revow and I adjust both values for the average increase across the county, which is about twelve percent, that value would go to a hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand. I've applied the effective proposed tax rates, and you can see that person's tax liability moves to eleven-fifty-five, which is about six dollars and twenty-five cents more per month. Same thing with the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar property owner. That would cost that, that taxpayer about ten dollars and forty-two cents additional each month with the lower rate that's being proposed. Want to evaluate sales tax. I've mentioned earlier that this is about thirteen percent of our total revenue, and also mentioned that the economy continues to perform at an exceptional level. This is gross collections across the entire county, excuse me. It includes all of our municipalities and the county. The optic is simply demonstrate, used to demonstrate that sales tax is, is really, there's a lot of energy in the consumer environment and, and a lot of spending that goes on in Cleveland County. I've broken that down further, between Article thirty-nine sales tax and Article forty and forty-two. Forty would be the blue, forty-two would be the gold here. And the reason that I've broken it down in the aggregate is because Article thirty-nine is collected across the state and then redistributed by the North Carolina Department of Revenue to each county based on a population-per-capita distribution model. So theoretically, even, that, that number could increase, even if Cleveland County's a So theoretically, even that number could increase even if Cleveland County's economy wasn't seeing the same type of fruit here. The good news is that revenue source is up. When you compare that to Article 40 and 42, both of these articles are point-of-sale distributed, meaning dollars spent in Cleveland County stay in Cleveland County or a percentage of them do. Even though the calculation is different, the outcome is the same, and both are trending in a very positive direction, which allows us to capitalize on those resources. Here's a revenue analytic that I've shared with the board many times, but again, I think it's important to remember as we talk about doing more with less, being principally lean, focused on efficiency, maximizing public resources in an environment of competing priorities. We have two measures here. One is property tax dependency and one is sales tax dependencies. These numbers are actual numbers based on prior year audit reports from each of these entities. And what you can see here is at 54.34%, we're less dependent upon the property tax than many of our regional peers, and same with sales tax. So, what this tells me is that we can be, we're recession-proof, not proof, but recession-ready. Poor choice of words. But in the event that sales tax were to dip, our budget is not over-reliant on that revenue source. And the same thing with property tax dependency. In the event that there's some type of contingent expense that's unexpected, or there's an industry that relocates or dissolves, we're not overly dependent so that the only way we can recover is by adjusting the property tax rate. And those levels of being balanced in our revenue portfolio are what allow us the flexibility to seek high performance, carry out the board's strategic plan with a rate that is below revenue neutral. Moving on to the expenditure side of the budget, here's the proposed $120 million, $120.5 million budget by function allocation source. As you can see, about 28% in our Health and Human Services, 29% in education, and 27% in public safety. What that's literally demonstrating is about $27 cents out of every dollar we spend is in public safety. And I think that's important. As we talk about a priority-based budget and directing our resources to the things that the Board of Commissioners identify as your vision, and you compare this budget in FY '22 to the budget in FY '14, '15, you can see that there's been a very strategic rightsizing and a resource shift inside our budget that has taken Human Services from 35% to 28, and Public Safety alternatively has gone from 19% of our budget to about 27%. And we're able to, again, allocate resources based on the priorities of the Board of Commissioners and rightsize our organization so that it's more comparable to our high-performing peers in a way that doesn't grow the total budget. As you can see here, since 2014, at 113.5, in 2022, 120.5, that's only about a 6.15% increase over all those periods. I would point out, and something that I'm very proud of and thankful for the board for your support, over that same time period, for an employee who's worked in the same job, we've seen 20-plus% wage increase over that same time period as well. So, I keep talking about priority-based, competing priorities, and a filtration process that gets to a balanced, responsible budget. And there's multifunctional aspects that we have to review as we go through that. I'll talk briefly through each of them. Essential County Services, those are things that we are the provider. We are the service provider. Things like law enforcement, public safety of all sorts, things we have to do. There's also things that we know are coming, that we have to be prepared for. There's specific initiatives that are tied to the board's strategic plan and the vision of improving the community. And then there's other things that people do better than us, or maybe we're not authorized to do, and our role would be supporting them in their mission and vision. So, I want to work through those systematically, starting with community partners. The board, many years ago, started a municipal grant program that includes 14 of our 15 municipalities. The FY '22 budget continues that funding at a level of $147,000. Each of our municipal partners are allocated to receive an amount equal to the prior year. For our nonprofit allocation, we've got an allocated amount of about $1.8 million in next year's budget. That's an increase of about $280,000 from the prior year. And here are just a few of our partners that we are relying upon. That entire list is included in your budget packet. Community College, I mentioned earlier, is being proposed to receive a $400,000 increase. That's a little over 20%. If you'll recall back in FY '19 with Dr. Hurst onboarding, he and I really worked to identify a lack of local funding. And I would point out that out of the 59 community colleges in North Carolina, we were in, you know, outside the top 55 from a local perspective. That doesn't mean the community college has been underfunded. That means that they were exceptional at private fundraising, state grants, and other avenues other than local dollars. And some of that has not necessarily been as robust. He and I have worked on a five-year funding ladder to get them to more of a comparable level. We froze that in FY '21 because of revenue restrictions here at the county. And so, our five-year funding ladder has now became six years, recommending turn that back on in FY '22. And I think that's important when we, as I mentioned, we don't, there's not 100 community colleges in North Carolina, so not every county has one. So, we have to be more selective in addressing who our peers are and who we want to compare ourselves to. So, we've selected about a dozen community colleges that have an average population in their county of 105,000. The average FTE count there is about 3,073, and the FTE per capita is about 34.2. This is simply demonstrating that our peer group selection gives us a fair benchmark as we begin trying to adjust our level of local funding to a more competitive level. And as you can see, whether we compare this percentage of the general fund or pennies on the tax rate, we've been lagging historically. The community college budget in totalities tick over $22 million, with about 2.4 of that coming from local funding and about 19.6 coming from federal and state. The proposed $150,000 increase in operational allocation, and then another $250,000 in capital is what makes up the $400,000. And when you plug that in to complete the six-year funding ladder, you can see, even though we started substantially below back in 2018 when we first drafted this plan, by the time we arrive in 2025, we've caught and passed that peer group and are in a much more appropriate place to ensure that our premier workforce and skilled trades training community colleges is in a better spot to perform their goals and their mission. Cleveland County Schools, as I mentioned, their budget's balanced on a 14-cent tax rate. Following the Board of Commissioners' strategic plan, our strategic work session, the direction was given to staff to develop a budget that would be cash-neutral, meaning that the tax rate will be set to 14 cents. The amount of funding that goes to the school system would be equal to what they received in FY '21, and anything collected in excess of that would go into a Commissioner-controlled escrow until the point that the school board could report back on specifically two measurement principles. One was teacher supplements, and the second one was a long-term capital plan. We anticipate that escrow accumulating about $1.4 million. And again, the only funding change is in the state restricted capital, which is the sales tax allocation, and the cash flow change of $750,000 would also go into that Commissioner-controlled Lastly, I'll speak from a community partner perspective about the fire service. And as you know, this has been on the Board of Commissioner's strategic plan for some time, and I would remind the board that we have 12 volunteer fire departments in Cleveland County, 10 of which belong to a Rural Fire Commission, Latimore and Rippey, who are still autonomous. We have three municipal fire services, Shelby, Kings Mountain, Bullin Springs, and actually Lawndale would be on there too. And our rural unincorporated citizens are really getting a heck of a good deal with their rural fire protection at $51 per capita compared to an average professional fire of about $200. So, it's stretching, again, doing more with less. That principle of higher budget strategy continues to be true even with the fire districts. A little bit of overview, we have 448 total volunteer firefighters over these 12 departments. The board remembers back in 2018, we raised the fire tax rate to 8.75 cents. That is the recommended rate, and the FY '22 budget remaining solid there at 8.75. When we compare that to our peer group in 2020, they have continued to escalate, and the peer group's tax rate's about 9.54. So, still just a shot below that, but we feel good about the budget that we've drafted. I would remind you that back in '18, we evaluated the impact on homeowner, and the 3.75 cents, as you can see, was roughly four to $7 as far as a monthly impact. And we also ran an analytic that measured the total cost of the additional tax compared to the monthly savings through a homeowner's insurance from someone who was a Class 9 or a Class 10 in the county, and then that being reverted back to a Class 6 because of the daytime coverage and some of the advancements that we were able to make in fire coverage by really investing the appropriate level of funding into that service. And as you can see there, the monthly insurance savings for someone moving from Class 9 or 10 to a 6 was about $18, where the fire tax only cost them about 4. So, their actual economic change was about $14 to the good per month. And when we multiplied that across the total number of households that reverted back, we estimated community economic savings of about $200,000. And here's just another illustration of how that can work when you look at the total big picture from an economic change perspective of a homeowner. So, next year's budget for our fire districts is about $4.3 million. That's an increase of about $150,000. And as you can see, that's evenly allocated, about $15,000 per unit that will be used to help cover some capital costs incurred in the previous year with radio replacement to ensure that technology's modern and up-to-date. Shifting from community partners to the Board of Commissioners' strategic plan, and again, as we talk about a priority-based budget, the board's plan is where we try to put as many of our resources as we can. And things identified during your work session was a comprehensive public safety strategic plan. Back in 2016, the county drafted its first-ever volunteer fire strategic plan. That was a five-year plan that's set to expire at the conclusion of this fiscal year. And the board really prioritized that as your top priority to update that and make sure that as we see growth in housing and the casino resort down in Kings Mountain, that we're prepared collectively, not just in volunteer fire, but in all things public safety and a comprehensive, long-term plan. We also have funding allocated for the implementation of our, in Phase 1 of our organizational capital improvement plan specific to a Justice Center campus, and that would be co-locating strategically court, jail, and sheriff. We wanted to make sure that we identified a funding that would maintain Cleveland County as an employer of choice, including funding our full pay-market study that was first implemented back in April. But we've also done things like, for the 11th consecutive year, maintain spousal independent coverage with no rate change. We'll talk about that more momentarily. But we feel strongly about Cleveland County continuing to be able to recruit and retain high talent. Strategies for implementing and improving our community health rankings, re-engaging Accelerate Cleveland and workforce development strategies. There's funding, as you'll see in your budget and in the budget message, tied to each of these top priorities. We also feel like we're going to be in a good spot to implement electronic timekeeping. That's scheduled to be effective July the 1st. As the Catawba Resort comes on track, we want to make sure that we're prepared there. We have a budget that we believe will maintain the board adopted policy fund balance percentage greater than 18%. Continue to be a leader and challenge our team in community vaccination and COVID-19 leadership. A couple other board priorities there involve community litter and beautification, and then community engagement transparency. Things like a Citizens Academy, things like broadcasting your meetings tonight, all of those are included in your priorities as well as in the FY '22 budget. Our next focus area here is essential county services. Again, these are the things that we have to do. Nothing's more true and nothing's more rewarding than being able to provide these services to our community at a very, very high level. And the consistency in the theme here of doing more with less, the quick illustration there is every year, we try to find these re-engineering cost-efficiency savings, and as we push those operational costs down, they're really offset by the cost of providing critical services just and the natural cost of doing business is going up. I would say one thing that we've tried to really push from an executive leadership perspective is this principally lean organization, meaning that we're trying to design an organization administratively that performs things that the community needs versus just pushing products out the door and saying, here's what we offer, designing specific innovative program services that the community needs to make, that serves our purpose, again, of making our community better. I want to run through what those essential services look like. I mentioned earlier, part of our budget balancing strategy for FY '22 is a further reduction with no reduction in service, no reduction in quality, and no reduction in priority, but a reduction in a rightsizing in cost in Health and Human Services, about $680,000 less in the FY '22 budget compared to FY '21. I would point out that there's been about an 18% reduction since 2015, and that's about $2.25 million annually. So, the total cost in FY '22 is about a tick over $11 million cumulatively between Public Health and Social Services. But when you look at the chart there, you can see back in FY '15, we were somewhere around $12 million, and that's been flat and down even with pay increases and, again, no service reductions over that timeframe. Public safety, not everything is down, and cut doesn't mean, isn't the message that we push to our team. And here's an example of that. When I evaluate the public safety side, which if you'll recall from your function allocation slide back at the beginning of the presentation, has moved from 19% of your budget to 27% of your budget over the last seven years. And the reason is that's where the priority's been. So, even though there's been cost savings in other places, the board's priority has been here, and there's been about a 39% increase in public safety funding. This includes 45 public safety positions over that timeframe, and we're spending about $27.2 million in public safety next year. We've also had a really high focus on efficiency, vertical integration, and working smarter. And central administration is really the spine of the organization. Again, you can see these priority centers that have been, that funding has been focused into so that we can increase the complexity and make our organization a better place to work and serve our community. Human resources, electronic maintenance, information technology, all critical components to supporting the organization, and all have seen significant funding increases over that same time period, which have ultimately allowed us to be more adaptive, evolve, and more efficient in other places. So, when I look at it in a summary perspective, the total budget's only grown by 6.15% over the last seven budgets. Public safety and central administration have been up. Health and Human Services has been a little down, and in all other departments have seen about a 1% budget reduction over that time period. Some emerging issues and projects that we need to be aware of that have been considered in the FY '22 budget. From a policy perspective, we continue to work on our animal services ordinance and our land use plan, the development of that plan, the standards, and we hope to get that full plan back to the board in late summer at a work session. From an economic development perspective, we continue, we just did a ribbon cutting in our Shell building, Shell 3, on Friday. We want to continue that program. We want to restart Accelerate Cleveland. We're working on site plans from an industrial perspective for Dover Mill. Operationally, we want to continue to manage the population at the jail and work with our public safety leaders, our judges, our sheriff's department, to make sure that they're fully supported. We want to be ready for remote workplace, and also, we want to make sure that our budget is recession-ready. Included in your notebook for your budget is your capital improvement plan, which has details pertaining to the projects that you see up there from a jail, court, Board of Elections, 911, co-location of Public Health and Social Services, as well as your technology plan, which is the 2025 systems planning that focuses primarily on data security, automation, and transparency. But we believe with intentional investment into these areas that we can really advance these strategic initiatives, and we see them coming down the line as priorities to our Want to focus, lastly, on workplace wellness and performance. Performance management is a cultural investment that we began making a couple of years ago. This past year, FY '21 was the first time that we had a measurement investment into our employees based on performance, where we had reinvestment back into our workforce based on specific earmarks that were accomplished. I'm so pleased that that happened. That creates massive cost savings for the organization which can be reinvested. Moving into FY '22, the proposed budget includes a carryover of that program with a moderate increase, but the addition of two measurement tools. One includes active participation in health-driven activities, and the other one is effective timekeeping, implementation of electronic timekeeping. And as you can see, both of those, again, logically, are not only what's best for the organization drive performance, but they also have physical return, which allows us to operate in a more lean manner. Both will be Both will be paid again in September and March, very similar to this year, and each of those qualifiers would represent a half percent up to a full projected outflow of 3%. So very similar to this year. Our employee wellness fund, I would remind the Board that we are self-insured, self-funded. Our employer-only obligation's about $9.9 million. So you can see, for example, in FY21, where we project, where we had an actual experience of a 12% actual claim decrease, that that has meaningful, meaningful investment. And we've got a tremendous amount of data on our disease management programs, which is cardiovascular and diabetes management, as well as waste circumference management, that the return on that is about $4 to every $1 invested. We have about 1,150 total covered lives, and even though medical inflation has been averaging about 10% over the last 24 months, because of the performance of our plan, the buy-in of our employees, the behavioral changes we've seen, the FY22 budget includes a very minimal investment of about $250,000, which is less than 3%. And when I compare our performance, again, we measure performance in everything that we do. Here's a laundry list of counties across North Carolina and what they spend on employee wellness claims. Cleveland County's highlighted here in orange. All of these are adjusted, so that it's apples to apples, meaning that just because Forsyth County is bigger than Cleveland County, we've adjusted all of that so that it is comparative. And you can see, I mean, as we compare ourselves for average claims, the wellness initiatives that we've implemented are obviously creating return, and we're spending much, much less on claims, whether it's ER claims, outpatient, inpatient, however you want to measure it, it is absolutely generating return for our taxpayers. Couple slides on our solid waste department. We've got about an $11.9 million budget. We are recommending the implementation of a citizen recognition system, which would be a window cling system that is mailed to all taxpayers for use and using our man sites, recycling centers. The point there is to promote material integrity at our landfills, about $300,000 an acre to build municipal solid waste sales, and limiting and protecting the integrity of the material that's coming in is something that's critically important. We're also evaluating staffing and scheduling at those sites, focused on consumer, customer service improvements, things like efficiency and safety, traffic flow, lighting. And we've already accomplished two of those sites being remedied, and the remainder of those will be included in the FY22 budget. Here's an optic of what that citizen recognition system would look like. If approved, we would roll that out in July. That would be mailed with their tax bills. No enforcement would begin until late fall. But this system's similar to Lincoln and Caldwell County, where again, you're just trying to provide some level of predictability and integrity to who's using those sites, to the people who are actually paying for it. We're also looking at a horizontal expansion of our C and D site. We're applying for a life of site permit, which would essentially permit the remaining phases of our municipal solid waste site there, and that would be phases four, five, six, and seven. We're working with our business development director, as well as our contacts with the Catawba Resort to better understand the level of material, both electronic and MSW that would be coming into our landfill. And then we're also beginning to track vendor and customer material input, meaning trying to identify commercial waste that may be, should be screened out as opposed to residential. And Commissioner Bridges, that completes what I have prepared to talk about tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions the Board may have.
Commissioners, have you questions or comments on the presentation of the budget?
Congressman, I think you did a very well job in presenting it. But just as a question for the audience, to close up one sale, which we will have seven or eight at the end of it, what does it cost per sale to monitor for that 30 years?
So you're talking about it in our landfills, specific to municipal solid waste. So we have two closed sites right now, and our liability's a tick over $20 million. So $10 to $11 million per sale is an approximate cost to close and monitor that with regulatory compliance over a 30-year period.
Thank you.
I'd like to say y'all have done a great job. You've given us a lot to think about, so we'll have to be mulling through that for the next week or so.
Anybody else? I'd just like to say I appreciate you working so hard on this for the last six or seven months. We know you've been busy with COVID and the whole thing. And I like the fact that it's, you're asking the employees to give us performance, but then you're going to reward them for the performance. And we have a lot of plans in the future for capital improvements and such, and we're making plans, and we can't get anywhere without plans. And I feel like you've done a great job. I appreciate all your hard work on this.
So yeah, Brian, I would like to echo the same sentiments to you and your staff. And I know there's many Department Directors that are in the room today. And for someone who's spent more than 30 years in local government, I understand the process and the mechanics that go into developing a budget like this. And then not only once implemented and approved, but once it's developed and approved, then you've got to implement that and monitor that over the next year. So it essentially turns into a work plan per se for the next year, and you have to meet that throughout. So for all you guys in the room, for you and Karen, your leadership, and the Department Directors, that one is, that has prepared the budget to get it to this point. And then, once it's approved, whatever the final product is, implement that over the next 365 days of the fiscal year. So I squarely appreciate it and want to make sure that you all recognize for the work that you've done to get it to this point.
And I would just say I echo what everyone is saying. Good job.
And for everyone's information, on June the 1st, we'll have a public hearing on the recommended budget. And Brian, can you tell us where the citizens can see a copy of this?
Sure. So there will be a copy, obviously, here in this building, in Kings Mountain at the library, at the library in Shelby, at the upper end library as well. So at least those four spots, and we were discussing some alternative spots, and we'll put that on the website tomorrow, but at least in each of those libraries for the next two weeks, again, leading up to the public hearing then on June 1st.
Okay, and we'll plan to have the public hearing and then a vote on it. Okay, thank you very much. And that gets us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Gordon, do you have anything you'd like to report?
No, I don't think I have anything to add, other than just greatly appreciate the county employees from Brian all the way down to everything that they do.
Mr. Whitson.
I attended the Board of Health meeting last week, and I'm glad to say that we're still below the state. We're at 3% positive rates. That's below the state average, which is lower than the national average. And that we've got, at that time, we had 32% of the citizens of Cleveland County have been vaccinated. So one of the concerns is now, as more and more people are vaccinated and more and more things are opening up, it may be getting harder to get that, get the last ones vaccinated, but there's plans for trying to attract that. Also, last Friday, several of us attended the Fallen Law Enforcement Tribute. And it's, I think it's great that we can have a tribute to officers that have fallen in the county all the way back to, was it 1905 or '07 was the first one? So I think we need to continue to honor the people that have served us. And that's what I have.
Had several things, attended a couple of land use plans since the last meeting. Also, the law enforcement tribute. And today, I got a chance to go to the gun range. And if I can at this time, I'd like Brian to either show us what we got or tell us what we got as a prize today.
I'm glad to do that. I do not have the optic with me, but Commissioner Hutchins is describing what was, again, a win for Cleveland County today. We received word from the Outdoor Heritage Association, which is a state nonprofit. We've been actively pursuing a competitive grant to expand, to assist in the expansion at the shooting complex, and we received word today of an award of $215,000. So, so, so meaningful on that project, and those dollars specific to the Outdoor Heritage mission of adopting and getting youth outdoors, especially in a period where we've all been crammed inside for some period of time. Their mission and purpose is really to move away from TVs and gaming and get outdoors. And we're so excited about being chosen for that grant. And again, $215,000 will go a long way in supporting their mission.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And some of the things that we talked about today is some of the programs, maybe this summer, that we may have. It'll be open to other counties and other places because they're all statewide. And one thing about that is if a parent brings a child in for a work session or a camp during the day, then they'll attract them to stay in the county and visit the other places of Allen, Anthor, travel, tourism, and different things. So it's a win-win. And then we looked at the construction, there's a new portion of the gun range, Brian, and then we're going to take a look at it, and we're probably looking at, what, June or so?
Yeah, third week in June.
Third week in June, and we'll have an opening on it, so it's coming along real well.
Mr. Hart.
I attended one of the comprehensive land use meetings, which was very interesting. Also, was that my first ribbon cutting for one of our Shell Buildings, which was amazing to see that building and look forward to seeing what company ends up going in it. And again, I would echo a big thank you to all the staff that are here, from all the Department Heads, and to Brian for our budget.
Thank you. I attended several things that have already been mentioned, but was really touched by the Fallen Law Enforcement Memorial. You know, we're in public service, and we serve, but those guys gave the ultimate sacrifice. And, you know, we don't need to forget them or their families because their families suffer through that, too. And like you said, go back over 100 years, we've had officers that have died in the line of duty. And that, do, does anybody in the staff have anything they'd like to report?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I do, if I could just take a few minutes of the time. As you know, Cleveland County has about 30 advisory boards that the Board appoints to. And during COVID pandemic, a lot of those boards were paused due to COVID restrictions, things like that. But as the restrictions are lifting and vaccinations are growing, it's time to start doing our citizen appointments again. And I'm doing this for the people at home. If they could look on the screen, so if you would like to get involved with our boards, this is our website, and if you scroll down, here are County Boards and Commissions. Scrolling down, it will tell you about the boards, a training you need to attend online. And on the second link is all of our board information. Here you can apply for positions. You can apply for more than one, or just one at a time. Fill out the application, it comes to me electronically. It also has, if you would like information specifically about each board, for example, this one, it has the board liaison, their, what they do, their contact information, meeting dates. As much information as we can about each of these boards is available on our website. These boards vary from adult home care, animal services, various planning and zoning boards throughout the county, Commission for Women, our shooting range. Appointments are made to these boards in June and December of each year, and June is quickly approaching. So we are needing people to fill these boards. As you can see, we have vacancies, expirations. We urge and encourage our citizens to get involved. It's a great way to serve your community. If you have any questions, you can contact the liaison, you can contact me. But serving on these boards is a great way to continue to make Cleveland County a great place to live, work, and play.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, the next meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will be held on Tuesday, June 1st, 2021, at 6:00 PM in the Commissioners' Chamber. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? We adjourn. Thank you, everybody, for attending tonight.